This meeting is called to order at 6:30 PM. Welcome to the June 7th meeting of the Penfield Board of Education. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is the administration of the oath for our newest board member, Krista Can. So Ms. Can, would you please stand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of a member of Board of Education.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay, now we're gonna examine the, where am I on the right one here? There we go. It is recommended that the Board approve the June 7th, 2022 agenda as submitted to me. Have a motion a second that the agenda of June 22nd, June 7th, 2022 be approved as submitted.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. It is recommended that the Board approve the consent agenda, including the approval of the minutes, which include the minutes of the annual vote and election of May 17th, 2022 as submitted, the minutes of the public hearing and regular Board meeting of May 24th, 2022 as submitted, the acceptance of the recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, the acceptance of the recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, the acceptance of the recommendation from the Superintendent on Personnel Changes, budget transfers for July 1st, 2021 through May 31st, 2022, and a request to approve the bidders that you have listed, and renewing the bids out that you've listed, and then finally, the approval of the request to dispose of unserviceable textbooks. So may have a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. It is recommended that the Board approve the Treasury report, including the cash report, the general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, the general fund budget status report, the school lunch fund cash report, and the school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending April 30th, 2022. So may have a motion and a second that they be approved.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Which brings us to special reports, and I believe we have some today?
We do, yeah. So thank you. We have this evening, I'll read them all and then we're gonna go through them, for special reports, recognition of student artwork, and then we are gonna be doing our recognition of tenure candidates and staff benchmarks, and then we have our sustainability committee presentation, that's from our students here who have been working diligently all year around the sustainability committee. Textbook presentation, we have one textbook to bring to the Board for review, and then we will also welcome our new board member, Krista Can, and we will recognize Board Member Barb Baviars. And that's what we'll, I'll turn it over here in just one minute to Dr. Maloney. I will say though, we've got lots of little ones here, and so I just wanted to remind everybody that although this is a Board meeting, when we hear little kids making noise occasionally, it really keeps us in business. So we're okay with that. So moms and dads and grandmas and grandparents and family, if, you know, don't worry, okay? We're here to celebrate this evening and everyone's doing their best, but just know for superintendents and board members and principals and teachers, we love the sound of children because it means our schools stay open. So thank you very, very much. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Maloney.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam, and to echo Dr. Putnam's comments, we have not been able to have this meeting where we celebrate not only our student artwork, but also our longevity in terms of employee longevity and tenure, and so we haven't had this meeting since 2019. So it's so wonderful to be back in person and have everyone here, and so thank you so much for coming. It is my pleasure to get to share with you this amazing artwork that our students have done, and through the Arts in Education program, the goal of the Arts in Education Permanent Art Collection is to honor outstanding student art using the community area walls of our school buildings and/or our sponsors' building as display spaces. So underwritten by the Family First Federal Credit Union, for the past 14 years, each selected work has been professionally matted and framed, and displays a small plaque, which you can see, listing the student's name, grade, year, and our sponsor. These framed works will be returned to the student artists the year they graduate. So I'm just gonna say this before we have the students come up and their principals are going to share a little bit about the students and the piece. Students, after we have gone through all of the students, please take your artwork out into the hall, and we're gonna have some photographs and be able to get some good pictures. Okay? So I'm gonna start with Cobles, I saw Mrs. McNair.
Good evening, I'm Kelly McNair, I'm the proud principal of Cobles Elementary School, and we are recognizing tonight Asama Hussain. Asama's artwork was chosen from Cobles Elementary, she's a fifth grader in Mr. Young's class. Asama completed two portraits, one in first grade and one in fifth grade. Her framed artwork shows how she grew as an artist and as a person while she was at Cobles. She is very proud of her cake in her first grade portrait and her drawing skills in her fifth grade portrait. When she is not in school, Asama likes to read books, bake, and play with her best friend, Eva. Congratulations, Asama.
Thank you. Next up is Harris Hill. Mr. Nelson is not able to be here tonight, but Mr. Herschler from Scribner will jump in.
Thank you. Okay, here we go. Good evening, everyone. This piece is called "The Night Owl" by Paige Eppner. Paige is a very happy and social first grader. Her inquisitive nature and ability to develop ideas from her own personal perspective give her a unique understanding of her world. She loves being creative and even has her own art room at home. She loves drawing, coloring, cutting, gluing, or anything else which involves her love of art. Our teacher says that Paige is an enthusiastic artist who always shows her best ideas through her curiosity, creativity, and hard work. Paige's artwork chosen for the district permanent collection is called "The Night Owl." When creating this work, Paige started with careful texture rubbings, using excellent technique to reveal the exciting patterns she could find. She tore these rubbings into pieces to make up the texture of her wonderful and expressive owl. Finishing her night scene, Paige reveals her creative vision with the countryside below and night sky above. The care and color variety she used shows the enthusiastic commitment Paige has to her art. Congratulations, Paige, from Harris Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Herschler. Mrs. Ware from Indian Landing.
Good evening, everyone. Abe, are you okay with standing up so everybody can see who you are while I talk about you? All right, there you go. It is my pleasure to recognize Abe Browns this evening with his painting called "The Flowers." I have known Abe since he was in kindergarten, before he started at Indian Landing, we met in that summer, and we both started Indian Landing at the same time, so really nice to be recognizing him this evening. Abe created this painted paper collage after learning about the Brazilian artist Romero Brito. Abe was inspired by the bold colors, patterns, and outlines in Brito's work. Brito's still life paintings gave him the idea to create a variety of flowers for his collage. Abe is a fifth grade student who is a well-rounded artist who excels at drawing, writing, and all sorts of creative thinking.
Scribner!
Okay, double duty here. So Hannah Wachowski, where are you? You wanna stand up? Okay, congratulations kiddo. And this is from one of my favorite books that I read at the SEPTA fundraiser every year called "Snowman at Night." So this artist, fourth grader Hannah Wachowski from Scribner Road Elementary School, loves sushi California rolls and plays the violin. Interesting. She has a cairn terrier named Max and a sister Caitlin in the second grade. Her favorite subject is art. The artwork is "Snowman Artist." Students read the book "Snowman at Night" by Carolyn Buener. They were tasked with making their own snowman come to life, like the illustrations in the book. Various art concepts were utilized, such as composition, form, radial pattern, none of which these I understand, in concepts were utilized, I already said that, in the snowflakes and with creativity. They used many art materials, including Sharpie, tempera paint, and colored pencils. Hannah obviously did an excellent job with this project, and she and her parents should be so proud of her efforts. Congratulations.
Mr. Beddington, are you speaking for Bay Trail?
So first up for Bay Trail is Marina here? There she is. Stand up. So Marina's a sixth grade grader at Bay Trail, and her spare time Marina is a Girl Scout who plays both piano and viola, and enjoys drawing and playing volleyball and pet sitting. Marina's artwork is called "The Radial Name Project." "Radial Name Project" is a Mandela built from a student's name drawn inside a triangle and traced around a square forwards and backwards, finally creating the beautiful kaleidoscope image. The media is marker and gel pen. Congratulations. And next we have Sydney. Please stand. Sydney's an eighth grader at Bay Trail, and her spare time she likes to play volleyball, listen to music, and hang out with her friends. Her artwork is called "Radio Print Design." Design was created on a triangle on paper. Shapes drawn had to come off all three sides of the triangle. Next, a mirror image of the triangle design was drawn opposite the triangle to create a square design. Square design was transferred onto a rubber stamp and colored in black and white. Sydney carved the white areas and left the black. The stamp was multicolored, printed four times, and assembled to create a larger square radial design. Her design craftsmanship and printmaking are outstanding. Congratulations.
And Mrs. Watt from VHS.
Good evening. Our first piece is from our 10th grade student Madison Mullins. If you're here, go ahead and stand up, perfect. The title of her piece is "Hair Clip," it's from a digital photography class. Again, Madison is a sophomore in Mr. Wisebroads Digital Photography Class, so she also excelled in studio art last year with Mrs. Sprague. She is able to use the camera lens to look at the world with a unique point of view, and has a strong sense of composition and color. Her photograph of a hair clip showcases her ability behind a camera and her skill in creating an interesting image from an everyday object. Congratulations. Our next student is Richie Bell. Richie is a 12th grade student at VHS. The title of this piece is "Walter," and the media for this is digital inkjet print of oil on a canvas painting, and this was done in Mrs. Ponzi's art class. Richie Bell has a distinguished artist, is a distinguished artist at VHS since freshman year. They're skilled with drawing both digital and traditional processes. The portrait is their subject of choice, and painting was a new media that Richie quickly mastered. Oil paint in particular became their preference. This image is of a friend and a fellow VHS student. Richie is a senior that is planning on studying illustration at the Rochester Institute of Technology in the fall. Congratulations.
So students, if you would, please come forward and we'll take your artwork, if you'd grab your piece, and we'll take it out into the hall and do some pictures, some photo ops. Parents, if you wanna jump in on this photo op, you're more than welcome to. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Maloney, and to our incredibly talented students, families, art teachers from across the district, and our administrators who did the presentations. I'll turn it over now to Dr. Kenny, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, as we enter the recognition of tenure candidates and staff benchmarks. So we all have to listen to Dr. Kenny's directions and we'll be able to celebrate.
Good evening, everyone, families, Board of Education, Dr. Putnam, Senior Leadership. We'd like to welcome you to our tenure and benchmark celebration. As I stand here tonight, I'm reminded it's been over two years since we've had the opportunity to get together as a district to celebrate our staff, and it's been a long two years. So all of the awards that are given out tonight are well-earned. I'm also reminded that excellent organizations take time to celebrate and recognize their staff, and that is the key purpose for us being here tonight. Before we begin, I wanna do a couple thank yous. One, I'd like to thank the HR Office for all the presentations that are up here tonight, organizing all the materials. I did not wrap one of these gifts up here, just to be clear. If I did do that, it would not look this nice. So a quick round of applause for the HR. I'd also like to recognize food service for the wonderful cookies, thank you so much, and the punch. Appreciate you being here as well. In a moment, I'm going to ask all the Board of Ed members to come on up. We are going to create our own little procession line up here. I'm going to call departments and buildings up, leaders from each department and each building to come up and join us as well, and we're gonna go through our names fairly quickly, but just really wanna take the time that's necessary to honor all the staff members that are here with their families present. So when I call your name, you have the opportunity to come up, you can fist bump, you can shake, you can just say thank you, and then of course we have hand sanitizer. Now if you could just hand it up way back there at the back of the room if you wanna hand sanitize after you shake everyone's hand. Most people do that after they shake my hand anyway, so that's how it works. So at this time, I'd like to welcome the Board of Education up and all of our senior leadership. Come on up, and we're gonna make our line, and we're gonna begin tonight's recognition with our Buildings and Grounds Department, so George English will also join me. Okay, so celebrating a 15-year benchmark, we have John Toms. Come on up, John. We also have Sol Kret McColee, who is not here tonight, celebrating a 15-year benchmark. Celebrating a 20-year benchmark, Mr. George Corbett. Celebrating a 25-year benchmark, we have Thodarak Priffy, or otherwise known as Rocky, he's not here tonight, and celebrating our 35-year benchmark, we have Patrick Gary. And that concludes our Buildings and Grounds. Although he's not here tonight, we do wanna take a moment to recognize one of our food service members who's celebrating 15 years of service. Thank you to David Ehlum. If Mr. Gala could come up, Mr. Gala, come on up, we're gonna recognize Transportation. Our 15-year benchmark awards go to Kenneth Ballinger. Another 15-year benchmark, congratulations to Sandra Drone. Celebrating a 15-year benchmark, congratulations to Renee McCarthy. We have an additional 15-year benchmark celebration, congratulations to Kathleen Flanagan, who is not here, and we close out Transportation by recognizing a 25-year benchmark award winner, Mr. Mitchell Legon, who's not here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Gala. Moving on to District Office, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize a 15-year benchmark celebration, congratulations to Christine Schoeffel, who is here. Mr. Driffl, can you get the 15-year right here? I got you. You're not leaving empty-handed. So Mrs. Watt is coming up, we're going to now transition to Penfield High School, and we're gonna begin with our tenure recognitions, and it's at this time that I remind everyone that tenure is certainly earned, it is something that comes with hard work, dedication, it comes with the ability to meet the needs of students day in and day out. So congratulations to the following individuals for their tenure recognition. We're gonna begin with Catherine Cannon. Our next tenure recognition is Catherine Christie. An additional tenure recognition goes to Michelle Lozio. An additional tenure recognition is Christopher Pelletier. And although they're not here tonight, we'd also like to recognize Patricia Foran, Deborah Quick, and Erin Zimmerman for their tenure recognition as well. Celebrating 15-year benchmarks, we have the following VHS staff members. Marie Albano, come on up. Not here, okay. Cynthia Isler is not here tonight. John DiStefano is not here tonight, but we do have Teresa Kniesel here tonight. Congratulations to Christina Leonard for her 15-year benchmark. An additional 15-year benchmark that is not here tonight is Jill Paris. Congratulations to Michelle Sick, who I believe is here tonight, Michelle Sick? Okay. Congratulations to Jennifer Strong. And our last 15-year benchmark recognition goes to Kim Tang, who is not here tonight. Our 20-year benchmark celebrations go to the following staff members. Congratulations to Claudia Ditko. Congratulations to Mary Beth Walker. In 20-year benchmark recognition for staff member who are not here tonight, but a quick round of applause for Kimberly Roundy, Richard Stein, Catherine Shea, Jennifer Vibber, and Amy Williams. Congratulations. And we close out Penfield High School with a 25-year benchmark to Kevin Leep, who is not here tonight, but we wanted to recognize him. Thank you, Mrs. Watt. Like to welcome up Mr. Beddington for Bay Trail's recognitions. Tenure recognition for Bay Trail Middle School goes to the following individuals. Congratulations to Allison Faganbaum. Congratulations to Katerina Lestumbo. Congratulations to Caitlin Funstein. And Bay Trail tenure recognitions, staff members who were not able to attend tonight include Josette Campagne, Mitch Harris, Colleen Neer, Heather Rawl, and Jennifer Lerner. 15-year benchmark award winners for Bay Trail include Helen Gage. 15-year benchmark award winners for Bay Trail include Helen Gage. We'd also like to recognize for 15-year benchmark Jason Kaminsky, who is not here 20-year benchmark award winners for Bay Trail include Heather Maxima. All right, Heather is not here. And none of the other individuals whose names that I'm about to read are attending tonight, but would still like to recognize Rosemary Cooper, Amelia Cutrona, Coralie Derizio, Tricia Hart, and Anne Heatherington. Congratulations on 20 years. 25-year benchmark award winners from Bay Trail Middle School include Christina Esposito. She's not here tonight. Paula Freeman, who is? We'd also like to recognize for 25-year benchmark Maria Merle. And although not able to attend tonight, we'd also like to recognize for their 25-year benchmark Cheryl Georgia and Marie Signarelli. Thank you, Mr. Beddington. Like to call up Kelly McNair to present Cobble's tenure recognitions and benchmark awards. And all of the following staff members from Cobble's, whose names I'm about to read, are here tonight. So congratulations on her tenure recognition. Congratulations Emily Brewer. She may have stepped out. That's okay. I get it. Congratulations to Aubrey DeNorma. I'd also like to recognize the following tenure recognitions. Congratulations to Aaron Moving on to our 15-year benchmark celebrations at Cobble's, we'd like to recognize Donna Gallmeyer and Leann Townsend. Both are not able to make it tonight. 20-year benchmark award winners from Cobble's include Ann Kraus. We also have Carol Weedman, celebrating her 20-year benchmark. And although not able to make it tonight, we'd also like to recognize the following staff members for their 20-year benchmark in Cobble's. Congratulations to Jamie Palmer and Brendan Young. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. McNair. Although Mr. Nelson is not able to attend tonight, we are also going to celebrate Harris Hill. So the following staff members will be recognized for their tenure recognition. In addition, we'd like to recognize Amy Bella Rose, who is not here tonight, but is also being recommended for tenure. Our 15-year benchmark award winner from Harris Hill is Karen Sedida. 20-year benchmark award winner from Harris Hill is Amanda Notareski, who is not able to attend tonight. 25-year benchmark award winner is Karen Robinson. Come on up, Karen. All right, Karen isn't able to attend tonight. And we also have Janine Rude. And celebrating 30-year benchmark award is Hillary Peroni from Harris Hill. Hillary's not able to make it tonight. Like to invite Mrs. Ware up for Indian Landings recognitions. We're going to begin with tenure recognitions for the following staff members. Congratulations to Hannah Gisika for her tenure recognition. And congratulations to Ashley Kaiser for her tenure recognition. Celebrating a 15-year benchmark award for Indian Landing School is Tessa Perez. 20-year benchmark award winners from Indian Landing Elementary School include Marissa Caddy and Kimberly Saxon. Both are not able to make it tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Ware. Mr. Herschler, I promise we didn't put Scribner last. It was just alphabetical order. Come on up here, sir. Our tenure recognitions for Scribner Elementary School include the following individuals. Receiving tenure recognition tonight is also Abby Wyman from Scribner Elementary School. Although we're not able to attend tonight, we'd also like to recognize Annie Nickel for her tenure recognition at Scribner Elementary School. Celebrating a 15-year benchmark from Scribner is Kristin Henderson, who is not able to be here tonight. 20-year benchmark award winners include Suzanne Amon and Cheryl Moon, both unable to attend. 25-year benchmark award winner includes Julie Flynn, who is here. And last but not least, celebrating 30-year benchmark award is Mr. Michael Fusaro, who is not here tonight. And I'd just like to say in conclusion that those are all of our awards. Thank you so much to all the families that are here to support. Our loved ones, I know that educators spend many hours outside of school, taking care of all the business that needs to take care of to meet the needs of our students. So I am sure that each and every one of the members who received either a tenure award tonight or a benchmark award is very grateful to their family. So thank you so much for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Have a
All right. So again, just a thank you for all of our folks earning tenure and our staff benchmarks awards. I just wanted to say thank you. You know, with the newer team here, that was Dr. Maloney's first time overseeing the Arts in Ed celebration, and Dr. Kenny's first time with our tenure candidates and staff benchmark. But obviously, there's lots of people behind the scenes who helped. So just thank you to everybody that put everything together for this evening for celebration. And we're going to shift. We're still in special reports, believe it or not. We are going to shift to something we've been waiting for. I know the board's excited about. And that is an update from our new sustainability committee. And they have some audit findings and a presentation. So your clicker should work. If you click through, if you point, I think it's perfect. And then I will turn it over to you. I think it's Parp, but just in case it isn't, if you could just each introduce yourself and grade level would be great. Thank you.
Definitely. Yeah. So thank you so much for recognizing the Sustainability Committee. We're all members of the Penfield High School Environmental Club and will be presenting this evening on behalf of the Sustainability Committee. And we can just go down the line and introduce ourselves.
I'm Eric Austin. I'm a junior currently, and I will be a senior next year.
My name is Anna Sarah Saletti. I'm currently a senior, and I'll be attending Cornell University in the fall.
Hi, I'm Sadie Caraway. I'm also currently a senior, and I'm going to be attending UVM in the fall.
Hi, I'm Bea Reichman. I'm a junior, and I'm going to be a senior this fall.
Hi, I'm Anna Yato. I'm currently a junior, and I'm a rising senior.
We are a collaborative committee, including students, staff, and board members, with a common goal of implementing more sustainable practices within the Penfield Central School District. Together, we are working towards establishing a sustainability plan to structure guidelines and the timeline for our district in order to accomplish a significant reduction in waste and carbon emissions in the next several years and beyond. We are also working to increase awareness in our district surrounding climate change.
So as was mentioned in the last slide, our committee is working towards creating a district-wide sustainability plan. And our committee decided in that process that the most important first step was getting a baseline and benchmarking and conducting audits of the systems already in place in our district. So we conducted both energy and waste audits. And for the energy audits, we worked with a company called Wendell Energy, which was made possible through a NICE sort of program called the P-12 Schools Initiative and Benchmarking Program. Wendell has done a really amazing job. They've done a great job connecting with our committee, explaining difficult concepts to high school students who know nothing about energy audits and benchmarking. And they've really included us in the process. Through the process of energy benchmarking, Wendell measured and analyzed our building's utility costs, greenhouse gas emissions, and energy use over time. And then they were able to compare it to energy models and other buildings and their systems to give us perspective on where our district is at in terms of efficiency and sustainability. They used a few different perspectives to benchmark our energy usage as a district. And we found the most relevant and useful ones were the B3 benchmarking perspective and the Energy Star scores. Wendell was able to quickly pull together this energy audit by using information the district already had. So we used information on our energy usage from July 2020 to June So here on the slide, you can see a table displaying some general information about our district's energy usage. So the numbers reveal we used 65,596,492 kilobitu use of energy and 3,152.49 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. To give some context to the metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent, a house emits about 7.5 metric tons per year of carbon dioxide equivalent. And that number, 3,152.49, is equivalent to 685 cars' worth of emissions in one year. And it's important to remember with these numbers that they're not factoring in diesel and gas for transportation or the buses. This is purely the district's emissions. And these numbers are quite large. The amount of energy use comes at $651,167, which amounts to about $144.93 for students. And this is where the benchmarking really comes into play in terms of giving context to these numbers and perspective. So as I mentioned before, there's two main perspectives that were really useful in looking at how our district fares in terms of efficiency. So the Energy Star score looks at energy performance by evaluating physical assets, operations, and occupant behavior. And this is evaluated on a 1 to 100 scale, where higher scores represent more efficient buildings. So buildings with a score greater than 75 are eligible to obtain Energy Star certification. And the national average for K-12 schools is 67. The B3 peer rating focuses a little more locally, comparing our energy to schools within the NICE sort of P-12 program. And this is evaluated on a 1 to 100 percentile scale. So that means a ranking above 50 means the building performs better than 50% of its peers. So these are the scores here. Based on the Energy Star scale, Harris was the worst performing. Harris Hill was the worst performing with a score of 31. And the district office was the best performing with a score of 74. Currently, none of the buildings in the district evaluated would be eligible for the Energy Star certification, the closest being the district office, just under the threshold of 75. Based on the B3 peer rating, four out of six buildings were performing better than 50% of their peers participating in the NICE sort of P-12 benchmarking program. And based on the B3 scale, PHS has the lowest rating of 28, and Scribner and Bay Trail have the highest rating of 72. So in addition to the energy audit, Wendell conducted operational assessments. And Wendell collected more specific information about schools of the committee's choosing, which we chose Harris Hill and Penfield High School. And through virtual meetings and walkthroughs at both of those schools, they were able to look at these buildings and how they operate to give more specific recommendations for improvements. So at Harris Hill, they recommended interior lighting, gym ventilation, and kitchen ventilation upgrades, as well as retrocommissioning throughout the building. The estimated cost of all of these improvements would be $59,367, and it would earn an annual savings of $9,635. And there would be a simple payback time of 15.8 years. At the high school, they recommended interior lighting upgrades, gymnasium ventilation, and kitchen ventilation system upgrades, as well as the use of variable frequency pumps. So those So those recommendations are generally similar to Harris Hill. They also made a couple of additional recommendations with which they recognized that pool covers and boiler replacements, not builder replacements, boiler replacements, would need to be looked into further before they were considered or implemented. The estimated cost was $131,225, with annual savings of $20,253 and a simple payback time of 11.8 years. So these recommendations made by Wendell, based on their expertise of energy efficiency, is going to be used to inform crafting the sustainability plan next year. And the sustainability committee will review these suggestions and look at how much of an impact they will make and make decisions about how they will be used in our sustainability plan based on that.
All right. So this was one of our bigger projects this year that the Environmental Club and the Sustainability Committee was able to take on. It was our food waste audit. So we can see similar language to the energy audit. This was almost entirely student-led with the help of some other members of the Sustainability Committee. And similar to the energy audit, this is just essentially a rough draft of how we're going to determine how much waste we produce every single year, specifically in our dining areas. That would be the commons, the cafeteria, and then any cafeteria or cafetoriums at the different elementary schools. So this was a really cool process, as odd as it sounds, sort of looking through the different wastes that we had at our different lunch periods and being able to sort it into different sections depending on how we would be able to dispose of this. So in order to determine any potential waste solutions that we could implement in the following years, such as recycling or composting for community gardens or for larger composting plants, we need to determine how much of our waste is actually recyclable or compostable or being able to shift into a reusable alternative. So that's what this food waste audit would really help with. And it was a really cool experience to be able to determine how we're going to be able to separate everything, how we can really implement this for students. This was an arduous process that we were able to take on, starting at the beginning of the year, just discussing it and being able to move it actually into our cafeteria and our commons. And most of the students were very, very helpful in this. They were inquisitive. They really wanted to know what was going on. So it seems like there's a lot of hustle and bustle within this school, wondering what's going on. And we're really excited to expand this into some of the other schools and in following years. So like I said before, we did have some help from Katie Rigg, which is one of the Sustainability Committee members, as well as Mr. Wallen, our club advisor. And it was really helpful to have some adult perspectives on this and just some other points of views on how we can implement this and make it in the most efficient way possible. We were only able to do this in two periods, just for one day. As I said before, this was our first trial run. This is our first time ever doing a food waste audit, and it was entirely student-run. So our seven categories at the bottom, as you can see, would be fruits and vegetables, meat, dairy, trays, packaging, drinks, and the last one would just be anything that didn't fit into these. And so we determined this based on how these can all be disposed of. For example, fruits and vegetables are entirely compostable, with the exception of only a select few, such as citrus fruits. So we would be able to take this data and figure out how we're going to implement different waste disposal systems that we can put in in future years. And then also, how I mentioned before in the first slide, why we're doing this is so we can figure out how to successfully implement waste disposal plans in the future.
Yeah. So I think the biggest part that we're all really excited about is learning about what we actually found out through this waste audit. And I think our entire Environmental Club was pretty shocked when we weighed 90.5 pounds of waste in just two lunch periods in one day. That was pretty extreme. And then once we calculated what it would be for an average day of four lunch periods, that would be about 181 pounds of waste every single day, just in our lunch periods. And I know that that may seem a little extreme, but it's actually much more, the kind of waste that we're producing, like food waste, is a lot more damaging than typical waste that you find in a landfill because it produces a significant amount of methane. Methane has 86 times the global warming effect of carbon dioxide. So when we're looking at 100 pounds of food waste, for example, that would send approximately 8.3 pounds of methane into the atmosphere. With our 181 pounds, that would be almost 15 pounds of methane for just one day for four periods of lunch. So clearly, there's something wrong here, and clearly, there's a lot we can work on as a district. If we're looking at going into the nitty-gritty of the data, I won't go over everything, but there were definitely a couple surprising things that really stood out to us as a club. Number one, we measured 10 pounds of totally untouched food. That was pretty alarming to us. I think that some of the causes could be that students have to take certain items in order to get a free lunch. So a lot of students were just throwing that item away. A lot of it could also just be like you pack something and you don't end up eating it. So I think one of the goals for our Sustainability Committee next year is going to be figuring out how we address that issue. Another thing that was surprising to us was the nine pounds of trays. Another thing that we could look into next year is determining whether or not our trays are compostable. And then the final, the biggest takeaway was that we estimated that we are throwing away 40-plus pounds of fruit and vegetables every single day in our PHS lunch periods. This is incredibly alarming, and we think that the simplest solution would be developing a compost program here at PHS. One of the biggest things that we're going to focus on as a committee next year is planning for a possible compost program. If this were to be implemented, it would reduce almost one-fourth of our daily food waste here at PHS.
Through our collaboration with Wendell and conducting a waste audit, we have compiled some potential areas for opportunity. Many suggested improvements, some minor and some more involved, will be incorporated into our district's sustainability plan to achieve a set emissions reduction goal. Some significant, yet feasible, areas of opportunity include the addition of CO2 sensors to gymnasiums and kitchens, LED lighting, solar panel installation, replacing broken buses with electric ones, VFD pumps, as already mentioned, for heating and cooling, and EV charging stations, and even using locally grown produce in school meals. The possibilities are endless. Results from these audits will serve as guidelines for drafting our district's sustainability plan. We are excited by these goals and are looking forward to putting them into action with your help. Thank you.
We're all done.
I also want to give the opportunity, if there are any questions from the board.
Yes, board members, any questions or comments?
This is an exciting presentation at my last meeting because I have been talking about rooftop gardens or some sort of thing for years. And our own students are speaking the words that go right to my heart. I am excited for your future. I know that some of you will be leaving. I will be leaving as well. But I am excited what's left because you've inspired not only this board, but you've inspired other adults, you've inspired your own classmates to look at what this means. And this is huge. Now, I didn't see on one of those goals, though, a rooftop garden. But you said the possibilities are endless. So I am just so thankful for what a wonderful, wonderful way to explain. You all did a great job. And congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. And board members, any other questions? Again, I would also commend you. I think what you really did is you took the general sense of understanding that we have a problem, and you put data behind it, which is really the first step in solving the problem. And you've set the groundwork for the people to come and help you in the years to come. So I really, I think that is a great service you've done to the district. I also think you've saved us a lot in consulting fees by getting us started. And at the same time, we also do every, I think we're about ready to start one, every five years or so, a building condition survey, which is where we look at the needs and wants of our facilities. And that sets the roadmap for our capital projects for years to come. And this is also, like your goals, where you have all the details here, those are the kinds of things that can be incorporated into the building condition survey. You know, we have it in there, like I say, it's like a needs and a wants, but it gets it on the list. And a lot of times, wants come along and become doable if we're in the middle of something and it fits right in. So having it on the list is of value. So again, I think you've done a great service to the district, and I thank you so much. And we look forward to hearing future reports from you.
Just before you go, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the district and a reminder to our community that it was just a little over a year ago when your Environmental Club came asking for a Sustainability Committee with real data on why and how it would look. And so you did a great job mentioning some of the parent community members on, and also Mr. Wallen, who I think just snuck out, but I know he was here, as your student advisor and being part of the Environmental Club. And I also just wanted to say thank you. I know you mentioned him as well as Mr. English, our director of facilities, and our own Dr. Driffl, our business and finance assistant superintendent. Because you have, from a student perspective, and this is what I would hope all of our students see, when we talk about lifelong learning and really critical thinking and trying to get students to, whatever their belief is, to dig in and keep moving forward, these are things you're going to be able to take beyond the walls of the high school. So I think it's wonderful. And we talk way back, because I've been meeting with you for a couple of years, just as the Environmental Club, and we talk a lot about, like, it really has to be budget neutral. And so what I really liked, like Mr. Ellis said, is the data that you put there, because it's easy to say, there's a lot of waste. Once you start putting the pounds in and how it's done and the amount of fruits and vegetables, and you guys know, we've talked through, and you nailed it, like, we have to provide X to be a lunch per the federal food program. So you have to take the milk, you have to take the fruit, even if you don't want it. And so how can we work through that? And we're committed to finding those ways. Budget neutral is always important because we've got to fit it into our budget as a community organization, as a school district. But this is a start, and we've got big things. So I just want to say thank you to all those other people. And then my goal to you, though, is we've got some seniors and juniors. So I know you've got like maybe, what is it, Mrs. Wall, like six days of school left? So we need some current eighth graders coming into ninth grade, current ninth and 10th graders, so you continue that momentum. All right? So thank you so much. It's just really cool to see, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I learned that you can't compost citrus. So I did not know that. All right. So moving on with our special reports, we do have a textbook presentation. So I'll have, coming up, Nicole Whitehead, our director of STEAM and an incredible teacher. I'll let them both introduce themselves and talk a little bit about this book. Incredible. Yeah, live up.
I like, was this on? Yeah. I like that you were talking about the sustainability of the sustainability project.
Right. Yes. Like I thought that.
Okay. So I'm here with Mr. Lundowski, and we are a little disappointed because we did think the crowd was for the textbook recommendation. So if we pause at all, it's because we're just a little disappointed that people left before we had a chance to talk about this.
I was prepared to read the first couple of chapters out loud.
Yeah. Yeah. That's probably why they left. So anyways, I am so happy to be here, not only to talk about this textbook, but this course. Since Mr. Lundowski joined PHS, he has had a vision for this course. And we are going to be offering it, thanks to the board approval and work with Ms. Watt. We're so excited to offer this course. We already have a number of students signed up and enrolled in the class for next year. And so once we got that ball rolling, we're going to be writing some curriculum this summer. It was time to choose a resource that we could use.
Mrs. Whitehead, I'm going to interrupt, and I'm so sorry, but I just want to make sure, is the name of the course the same as the book? So what's the name of the course?
The name of the course is Studio Recording and Audio Engineering.
Thank you. Studio Recording, Audio Engineering.
Yes. And the textbook is Modern Recording Techniques. Read it without my glasses. So yes, so Mr. Lundowski is going to talk to us a little bit about why this particular textbook was chosen and that we're asking for the board approval of this textbook for use in fall of 2022. Take it away.
Thank you very much. So when choosing a textbook, really, you have to set forth the goal of the course first and foremost. So I had two goals in mind for this, the first goal of which is to teach the students how to optimally record themselves or others. And the other goal is to how to edit those recordings to create the best sound that they're looking for. So when you keep those two things in mind, there's really four things that you need to be able to teach students to be able to accomplish that. The science of acoustics is very important, the equipment that they'll be using, the technology that we've implemented for them to achieve those goals, and techniques for them to implement all of those together. When looking at textbooks, especially for this subject matter, which it's a little advanced for your typical high school general music courses, but I feel like this is pretty understandable for the students that I'll be teaching it to. Looking through just the chapter headlines, all of the goals that I have in place are implemented there. Chapters one through three are really focused on that sound, the acoustics. There's an entire chapter dedicated to acoustics, which really helps me in terms of creating that vocabulary that the students are going to need to be able to understand in terms of being able to communicate with professionals in the field, with themselves, with me. So chapters one through three focuses on the science. Chapter four is all about the equipment and the setup and the maintenance, which obviously, when you have valuable equipment, it's very good for me to be able to teach, especially with the textbooks, to help. I've done a lot of purchasing in terms of the textbook. They have recommended microphones, and I have been making sure that I am spending some of my budget money on getting industry-standard equipment for the students to be working with, so they'll be working with the same stuff here at PHS that they would be working out in the field as a professional sound engineer. And I think that that's important, and this textbook has an entire chapter dedicated to how to use that equipment, how to set it up, and what they should be using professionally. Chapter six through nine focuses on the technology, the digital audio workspaces that we'll be using. We have one that is a fantastic digital audio workspace that works with the quantums that we purchased. And we have three chapters dedicated entirely how to set that up, how to use it, and the book helps a lot with that. And then finally, like the entire back half of the book is all about the techniques that you'd be using to use that technology, the editing techniques, the art of mixing, signal processing, monitoring, everything that you, ooh, studio tips and tricks. I like the name of that chapter. And so this would be all the things that we would be going over throughout the course in terms of being able to use that technology in more nuanced ways, more experienced ways to be able to kind of do things more than just hit the record button on your iPhone and then send it to your SoundCloud. So that's the goal. And I think just looking through the book, there's a good 75% of it that would tie directly into what I want to accomplish in the course.
Wow. Do you use a boombox, hold down, record, and pause, and then lift up at the, because that's how I learned how to sound edit.
So you need to get the boombox that has the two discs, the audio cassettes? So you can play one and then record it to the other.
Some of you remember how to do that. I know, I see you shaking your head, right? Listening to Top 40, in case you.
So I got the questions slide up now.
Sorry. I get excited to be here. I'm not always here, you know? I get excited.
Board members, any questions or comments?
I have a question. I'm curious about the software. I know there's a lot of different softwares out there that some kids can access at home that are, you know, like GarageBand and things. And then there's things that are kind of more advanced. So I'm curious, like, what your thought is. And then are, do you think students can, are you using all digital music? Or do you envision students that play an instrument could record themselves? Or, you know, how do you see that playing?
Sure thing. The first part of your question was the software. We are using a program that is called Studio One. It is published by Personus, which works really well with the gear that we purchased, also by Personus. So it was really important, setting up the studio, that we create that kind of synergy between the software and the hardware. The school also provides, last time I checked on the portal manager, there's also Audacity, which is a free version. Studio One is not a free version, but we, through the purchases of our quantums, have all the copies of Studio One that we need for the course to get up and running. So it's not free, and unfortunately, it can't be used on student laptops. But A17, my classroom, does come fully equipped with 24 workstations with computers. So everything that they'll need to do, they'll have in my class, and they'll have time to do that. And really, I And really a hands-on approach with me. Oh, can you repeat the second part of your question?
I was, I was just curious if all the music will be digital or if students that play instruments have the opportunity to record each other and those kinds of experiences?
One of the requirements for the course was performance in a PHS ensemble or Music in Our Lives, which is the general music performance aspect, where I teach mostly performance skills on guitar and piano and drum sets. So basically I made it a gateway to get into the course to have proficiency on an instrument so that we're able to get together and have each student record themselves, record each other, get them together in groups and learn the nuances that you need to be able to learn to record multiple live signals at the same time. So I anticipate it being mostly an acoustic course, actually, with live performance, whether it's myself, I play a number of instruments that they'll be editing as well. So no, it's definitely kind of an offshoot of our great performance program.
Great, thank you. Sounds great.
Board members? I have a question. Do you see this course as being part of a track or is it something that is standalone? So if a student was interested, they could come in and do it without, you know, either a part of a track or coming in and doing it because they have an interest in it?
No, I see it as really a standalone, so long as they have that performance skill. The technology that we use in this course is not the same technology that I teach in Music in Our Lives, which would be the kind of the lead-in course for the general music student. When I was pitching this course, I went to all the ensembles telling them, you know, you play the trumpet, you are eligible for this course if you're interested in learning the technology. I see it as kind of a great melting pot of every sort of music student that the school has to offer.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to chime in and say, let the board know that the passion that you see here tonight, Mr. Lewandowski has this all the time. And this course has been a dream of his and I am so incredibly excited that we've been able, and this is really due to Mr. Lewandowski. He has really created an amazing program. The numbers that he has in his courses continue to grow and he plays the accordion like no one else I've ever seen before. So Greg, thank you for sharing the book with us tonight. I'm really excited for the course. I can't wait to see the products that, or hear the products that come out of the course.
No, and I remember at one of our post-observation meetings, we got out your pad and we wrote down exactly the way that we envisioned kind of the position turning into a full-time position. And currently the way it's slated next year is exactly what we had written on that pad. So I'd like to thank you, Leslie, for your support in getting this all rolling. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you'd think that's the end of special reports, but no.
We've got more.
We did officially swear in our new board member, Krista Can, and I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate our newest Board of Education member. We look forward to working with you on the board and on the district level. And again, congratulations. And I'll turn it over to the board if they have any statements as well, but thank you.
Board members? Anything you'd like to say to her?
I'm going to say yay. Yay, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
And I see your family here. Hi, family.
I think it's important to understand, when you have a group of seven people, each person has a big impact on the culture of the board and the way we work together. And so we're looking forward to having Krista working with us.
And we'll shift to recognition of board member Barb Abiars. And just on behalf of the district, Barb, thank you for 15 years and countless hours of outstanding service as a board member. The students, faculty, staff and community truly appreciate the hard work, contribution and dedication you've provided. All volunteer throughout the years. And, you know, I know the board will speak, I just wanted to tell you that as a superintendent, you know, you've been on the board since I've been in the district. I came in around the same time as an assistant principal when you joined the board. And what I love about working with you as a board member is the openness. So in terms of, you know, being able to bounce an idea off, you know, you can, you always reach out if you have a question. The openness in terms of talking through an issue or a concern or a suggestion, and you always bring, and we talk about this across the district, but you really, I think, are a perfect example of someone who works in public education who truly puts students first each and every day. It's all about what's best for all kids and you always go back to that, you say that all the time. I will on a personal note, the community might not know, but I meet with the board typically every summer, one-on-one. And I'll say breakfast, lunch, dinner, but it's got to be in Penfield because I want to support our businesses, my treat, let's just get together for a little bit. And Barb, I'm going to miss you because it's been root beer floats every summer.
It has been.
And I really do enjoy that. So thank you. I'm going to turn it over. We do have a couple of gifts I'll bring down to you.
Okay.
Oh, I got it.
Board members? You don't get to say anything, Barb.
I was just going to say, if I start talking, I'm going to start crying.
I'm going to go first because I don't want to cry. I just want to say that, I'm going to cry anyway. It's all right. I love you, Barb. And I want to say thank you. And one of the reasons why I'm here, that I ever came to the board, was because of Barb Abiars, because Barb and I served on PTA at Cobble's way back then. Way back in the day. Way back in the day. So I appreciate you so much and I appreciate your commitment to this community beyond the school. I mean, really. And I wanted to say that you're always such a champion and such a cheerleader for Penfield. And thank you.
Catherine?
I can't, I really can't top that. Not that I'm trying to. But, okay, here I go, right? It's just been such a joy and a pleasure to work with you. I'm going to miss you. But I'm so happy you're in a place and in a position to move on and do what you want to do and grab life and enjoy. And I wish you all the best. I just wish you could do that and this at the same time.
Thank you.
I guess I'll go next. So I'm not one to talk a lot. I don't like talking a lot. But I will say, it has been a pleasure, you know, serving with you. And I will miss our discussions and, you know, just, I hope that we continue.
We will.
What we started.
We will.
With you being on the board. I really look forward to that.
We will. Thank you.
I will say, I know I've only been working with you for the least amount of time, but you have been one of the biggest cheerleaders. You are always putting kids first and you're always coming from that perspective of what it is to be in a classroom and be in a public school. And you always remind me of, make sure you're bringing that to the table when you're making your decisions. And I just really respect the amount of time that you have committed to the school district. 15 years is a really long time and we are so grateful to have had someone that was willing to serve our community for that long. So, but I am so grateful that you also get to spend time with your grandbabies because that's really important too.
Thanks.
I would just say that Barb, you know, has been an asset. I mean, she's been in the community for a long time and I think I've been told that she helped set the district lines when it was founded.
Yes, it was. I was there, yes.
She's been with us a long time. She has a tremendous amount of historical knowledge about what goes on in the school and what goes on in the community. You also have the personality that makes us want to be around you and work with you. And I know that, you know, what I really always valued is when we get into topics, especially in the area of special needs, that's one of your forties and you would always take the time to explain the issues to us, because not every board member has the same experiences. You would take the time to explain the issues and what's important and what we really need to keep in mind when we make these decisions. And you have always been that person for us and I've always appreciated that.
Thank you, Mark. And I know that.
And with that, we do have, thank you, Tom.
There's more? Oh, my goodness.
I think that's every flower from Wegmans.
Thank you. I just have real brief something. Because Jim's in the back, so he knows that I can never be quiet for very long. But I was asked to be, to run for the board in 2007. And so I was elected by 50 votes. And was, my very first meeting was in July of 2007. And our daughter Megan was a soon-to-be senior that year. Susan Gray was the superintendent, but I got elected and then she announced that she was leaving December 31st. So I don't know if that was something I did or... And then we had Tom Strinning, who was our interim for six months. And then John Carlevati, who I actually grew up with in Penfield, became our superintendent. And then it was after John was leaving that this high school principal was standing right outside of our meeting and I said, are you applying? He goes, I have the perfect job. I don't want to. I'm fine. And it was Tom Putnam. I said, no, you need to be a superintendent someday. I don't know if you remember that.
I do. I thank you. Thank you.
But I knew. And over the years, I've worked with 18 board members, including Krista. So my final meeting, so that's 18. And what I'm very excited about is the future. I mean, you guys, Penfield Central School District made PBS radio news the day after our election. It made national news. How exciting is that? And so to me, Penfield has thrown that pebble into the DEI education waters. I see the ripples and they've already started. And I vision that those ripples have started small, but they're going to be big. And they're going to impact and have so many wonderful things to do with the students of not only Penfield, but wherever those students go. My junior year in high school, which was, you know, back when we were doing the lines for Penfield, my English teacher shared this quote from one of my big heroes, and it's Helen Keller. So what we once enjoyed and deeply loved, we can never lose because it becomes a part of us. So thank you, Penfield Central School District. Thank you for putting your confidence in me to be the steward on this board for the last 15 years.
Now you can, you want a root beer float? Let's go.
Oh, we're still going for root beer floats. And you did reference your husband in the back, so Jim, you don't get every other Tuesday off to do whatever you want. But I do know, and board members know, and my team knows, is like, you know, these jobs, because of all the evening work, there is always an impact on family. And so, you know, thank you. You mentioned your daughter, who's, you know, married and grandbabies for you and it's from when you started and she was heading into her senior year. So thank you to you, thank you to your family who've, you know, let you and supported you so we could benefit as a school district, Barb. Thank you so much.
Thank you and thank them too.
I think that's a fitting time to say that concludes special reports. A very long group of special reports, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Ellis.
Thank you, Tom. And now it is time for the last student representative report for the year. Ms. Lila Harvey, please take it away.
Hello, so good evening. Just beginning with an upcoming event this Friday, Pen Fest at the Dolomite Lodge is happening at Veterans Park. And this is a free family community event, which will feature music, food trucks and a kid zone. And donations for the Penfield Ecumenical Food Shelf are also being collected and each food item brought in is one entry into the raffle. Last Friday was very busy at the district. It was the Buddy Olympics and the Inclusion Walk, which is a fun event for all of our students throughout the district to come together at the high school to compete in different activities to promote inclusion. And of course, the last couple of weeks are coming up with the high school having its last day exactly one week from today. And then the middle school and elementary school is not being too far behind. At PHS, the music department was quite busy with the Spring Orchestra Concert being last night. And last Friday night was also the Penfield Food Truck Rodeo, which featured performances from the Jazz Band, Concert Band, Wind Ensemble and Jazz Ensemble, as well as the Scribner Chamber Strings. And also on Friday was the Senior Breakfast, where the class of 2022 enjoyed donuts together, received their yearbooks and viewed the senior video as a class. Another event for the seniors was the Senior Bash, which was held at the East Side YMCA and included different fun activities like Zumba games and different giveaways, including cash prizes and a car giveaway to one senior. And also Friday, grades 911 enjoyed shortened class periods to enjoy and the long anticipated return of Spring Fest, which included bouncy houses, food trucks, flag football and other outdoor games. In AP Biology, students were able to raise baby chicks to study imprinting and operant conditioning to train their chicks to complete an obstacle course. Tomorrow, the Black Student Union will be presenting a Juneteenth celebration for students that will also be livestreamed for the community. And lastly, for the class of 2022, graduation is June 22nd at Frontier Field. At Bay Trail, since last week was Inclusion Week, students signed the Inclusion Pledge and played Inclusion Bingo to meet new people. Students also attended a presentation by Sweetheart Hero, who discussed the importance of being heroes by standing up to bullies. And the eighth grade trip to Washington DC returned this year and highlights included touring the Capitol Building, Mount Vernon, the FDR Memorial, the zoo and the Lincoln Memorial. Students also participated in the ceremony at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. At the elementary schools, starting off with Cobble's, first graders celebrated their own version of Derby Day by racing the cars they had made with volunteers from the Greater Rochester Soapbox Derby. And they had a fun assembly with the Bubble Man as well. At Scribner, the Girls on the Run Team competed in the 5K at MCC over the weekend. At Harris Hill, first graders went on another field trip to the zoo, so just something fun to do with this nice weather. And third graders are improving their area and perimeter skills in a fun way by playing area and perimeter battleship. And students like the AP Bio students raised baby chicks, but in this case it was to learn all about the life cycles of different animals. And lastly, at Indian Landing, students got the opportunity to meet with Lauren Tarsius, who is author of the I Survived series. Thank you.
That was pretty comprehensive, board members. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Lila, are you graduating or are you with us next year?
I am with you next year. I'm a junior this year.
Great. Thank you.
Well, I would just say, it was, you did a fantastic job this year and we always appreciate hearing your, what you have to say about what's going on at the school. Better listening to you than Tom, so.
It's true. And so you get summer off, but we'll have you back in September.
We look forward to having you back. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess that brings us to superintendent reports. Dr. Putnam?
Great. So we just have some student-staff honors, Penfield updates, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for some business updates. For a student and staff, Cobble's Care Game. Cobble's recently held its annual Cobble's Cares Game, where they raised $885 for water for Sudan and collected several boxes of and collected several boxes of food for the Penfield Food Shelf. And just so the community knows, when we talk about water for Sudan, they're all volunteer, not-for-profit. And their headquarters is right here on 441. You drive by it if you're coming up to Four Corners. So it's a local organization that supports building wells in Sudan. Bay Trail donation, Bay Trail Store Club recently made donations of $400 to children awaiting parents and $400 to the Center for Disability Rights. Club members use proceeds from the store to support various charities throughout the year. And just recently, we had our Athletic Recognition and Signing Day. PHS recognized 36 athletes who will continue their athletic careers in college. At its annual Athletic Recognition and Signing Day, 13 of those athletes signed Division One and Two scholarships. Just a quick shout out to Mary Beth Walker, our new athletic director. This was an idea she had. We used to have two signing days, one in the fall, end of the fall, one in the spring. And she combined them in order to really do it big. And so, you know, media was invited. We had lots of people there. All of the students celebrate at once. So even though sometimes students might sign earlier in the year, we all celebrate this one time. And it's just, it really is a, a nice event. And coaches come, say a few words and really try to celebrate our, our student athletes as they head off to college. Donation, Ms. Judy Orlando generously donated a Reynolds trumpet to the Penfield Music Department. This instrument is a welcome addition to the music program and will be enjoyed by students for many years to come. And we'll shift to the Penfield Central School District updates. And I actually don't have any, but I left these slides in for fun. So for the last two years, I've given COVID updates, COVID numbers, I've talked about COVID. We are in this end stretch here of June. Nothing has changed from the state from the last time we've chatted. We do know that we're continuing to monitor, continuing to obviously allow masking and, but not requiring it. We are very hopeful that as we get through the summer and into next school year, we'll continue to return to normal. And I think you've seen some of that with both our student rep and our, our presentations around events like having Senior Bash, having our ball again, our prom, graduation, lots of, lots of big scale events. We, for the first time in two years, we were able to do our, um, our honors convocation for ninth, 11th and 12th graders. So just again, getting back into the routine of in-person events and, and we're getting there. So I do have a question slide if any of the board members do have questions about, about my non-report.
No, I just want to make up a question.
Sure. Catherine.
Did you enjoy working on that non-report?
I did. It was the easiest one I've done.
Glad to hear it.
I did. It was great. So, you know, I'm going to get shown up by the sustainability and our student rep. So this time, you know. But we're, we're really in the, we're really in the home stretch of the school year. You know, we're, we're just a handful of days at the high school, a few more at Bay Trail. And our elementary goes a little bit later, but we are, we're, we're, we're here towards the end, so. I will then turn it over to Dr. Driffl for business updates.
Thanks, Dr. Putnam. Does everybody hear me? Okay, fantastic. So just tonight's discussion is two informational items and then one action item. So just a quick update on school nutrition program and where that stands with regards to the USDA waivers that are set to expire. We're required to bring to the board our projected end of year fund balances before the end of the year. So this is our last meeting, so this is when we have to do that. And then we also want to share some information around our foundation aid plan draft for, for next school year. So as I mentioned, for the last two years, the USDA federal program for the school lunch and breakfast program has given out carte blanche waivers to public school districts for free meals. As of today, still, because it's kind of like been a point of ongoing discussion, those waivers are set to expire. So that would go into effect for even anybody that's planning to do a summer feeding program. There is advocacy continuing at the state and national level. A couple of states have taken upon themselves to institute their own free programs. I think California, Maine, and it's been proposed and maybe up to a dozen others. It was proposed here in New York, but the legislative session ended, I think, last Friday and it didn't, it didn't go anywhere. So as of this point, we are looking like we're going to be going back to paid meals, breakfast and lunch come next school year unless there's some kind of DC Hail Mary from Congress. If you recall, they did make a late addition, I think it was back, it was like late August. It was a really late addition last year. So it is possible, but we are preparing to move forward. With that, the USDA typically releases every year, it's called the PLE tool, the Paid Lunch Equity Tool, which is a calculation that we have to perform for fairness in our meal programming costs for both breakfast and lunch. And they have not released that yet, which is atypical. Typically around this time of year, we have that so we can start to plan for our summer food service budget review. And there are some discussions that that's not going to be released, which will essentially give K through 12 schools free rein to set whatever prices they want. It's a little bit disconcerting because there's been such an emphasis on that equitable pricing in, in the years past. So what we would do is probably try to model it and see what we can do. A handful of districts have already adopted prices for next year with some substantial increases. So what we're typically seeing around the county now here in Monroe is about $3 for lunch and $1.75 to $2 for breakfast. That incorporates not only just kind of the general inflation that we're seeing, but it's also been two years since we raised lunch prices or per breakfast prices. So typically here at Penfield, we would raise a nickel or a dime on an annual basis. And this could end up being more like a quarter. So it'd be a little bit more than what we have traditionally done, but we still have some time. Typically, we don't review this until August based on getting the word out, something that we might want to revisit in July, just so that we have the full summer to communicate the upcoming change for the next school year. But I just wanted the board to be aware. I know there's been, you know, some whispers about it in the community. It's totally out of our control. It's a federal program. But just so that the board's aware and the public's aware, that's where things currently stand. So as I mentioned before, year-end transfers to in-between fund balance accounts are required by education law to be pre-authorized by the board prior to the new fiscal year starting on July 1st. These are all ultimately pending final audit authorization. So the auditors come in on an annual basis over the summer to verify all of our figures. And we still have a couple of weeks left, so there's still all projections either way. The Audit Committee will receive the results in our September meeting and then it'll come back to the full board at our first October meeting. So here's where we sit. Our projection for the end of June, I'll kind of start at the top at a high level. So those are the beginning fund balance numbers. Those are the numbers that are essentially our rainy day fund. The assigned and unassigned fund balance, the $459,000 is dedicated to this year's budget. And the unassigned fund balance, that $4.71 million is this year's 4% maximum allowable fund balance that we can carry. So these are the classifications of fund balance that are not in reserve funds. They're not restricted. They're essentially for any unencumbered issue that the district faces. Then we add in all of the estimated revenues that we have. We add in the carryover encumbrances from the prior school year, so 2020, 2021. Those are purchase orders that are cut in June, but the items aren't delivered until after summer. So we have to keep those open into the new fiscal year. The in-year transfer from the capital reserves, this was the funding that was going towards the capital project that the community approved back in December. And then we also had an in-year transfer for a tax surcharge settlement that the town had agreed upon. And we subtract out, subtract out estimated expenditures, our estimated year-end encumbrances. A little bit larger this year, $2 million versus where we were, $1.4 million last year, but kind of historically aligned with where we've been. Estimated interest transfer, so those are the interest dollars that our reserves accrued significantly less this year based on rates being smaller in this past year. And then the assigned fund balance amounts that we had projected to the community and as a part of our budget development process. And the 4% unassigned fund balance of next school year's budget, the 22, 23 school year's budget, to give us an available fund balance of $11.9 million that we need to reallocate. So the first ones, one and two are again in accordance with the budget development materials that we put out to the community. That was voted on back in May. The first discretionary item is a $700,000 transfer to fund the TRS Reserve. As you recall, this is the newest reserve that's authorized by the state of New York. It allows us to fund against the TRS pension obligations like we have traditionally always been able to fund against the ERS pension obligations. This one, if you recall, is a little bit unique in that it's bound legislatively by how much we can put in on an annual basis. So it's 2% of the prior year of TRS earnings. So if you estimate that, it's about $35 million in TRS earnings. 1% would be $350,000. 2% is around that $700,000 number. And this would be the third year that we funded it to that statutory level. And we're capped at only doing that for five years. So we'd be able to do this for the next two years and then that reserve would be considered fully funded. We have scheduled a $795,000 transfer to finalize funding for the 2018 additions project. So the final cost reports for that project are due at the end of the month. It's all completely completed at this point, so this is just to pay those last invoices. We have proposed an $8 million transfer to fund the 2021 Transportation Facilities Project. That's that project that I just mentioned that was voted on by the community back in December. So essentially, this is money that we can dedicate now with cash towards the project that we won't need to borrow for in the future. So obviously, we get the benefit of not having to pay interest on borrowed debt. But the state also assumes that all capital project dollars are borrowed. So there's an assumed interest rate whereby the amount that we receive in aid on this, $8 million, will actually be a little bit more than that. So it's on both sides of the equation in our favor. We have a $1.8 million transfer to fund the liability reserve. So the liability reserve is capped at 3% of the budget for next school year. So we'll be a little bit under that. The liability reserves go towards mitigating any potential losses associated with uninsured sort of claims or judgments against the district. So this is just a risk mitigation effort that we're proposing for you this evening. We have $627,000, which is the last bit of that $11.9 million available that will fund the new 2021 Capital Reserve that was authorized by voters last May. And this goes, this is essentially our savings account to save for the next capital project. As Mr. Elidge mentioned earlier, we're engaging in our five-year building condition survey now. So it won't be long till we're, we're starting to talk about another capital project. The EBOLR Reserve is our employee benefits and accrued liabilities reserve. So this is one of the only balance sheet liability items on our audit that we're allowed to mitigate as an offsetting asset on our books as part of our fund balance account. We always update that to reflect what the actual value is pending the audit's completion. And then the last remaining authorization is that any remaining available funds, once the audit is complete, would be dedicated to that, that capital reserve account. So again, this year, it was, went into effect last year, so we did have a foundation aid plan this year. We're required, every school district in New York State that gets foundation aid increase of over $10 million or over 10%, needs to put forward a foundation aid plan to their community. So our increase for next school year was that $3.5 million or 22%. So the 22% maintenance that we have to put a plan forward. Our plan in accordance with the state guidelines is to dedicate the money towards maintaining instructional programming, specifically to ensure proper class sizes at the elementary level, dedicating resources for our English language learners and students with disabilities to improve graduation rates and eliminate achievement gaps and for social, emotional learning purposes, all of which are aligned to district goals and ratios for learner support. There is a, a one-page document on our board docs that's associated with this tonight that speaks to a little bit, some, a little bit more of the requirements associated with the legislative requirement to do this. The one thing I do want to point out is that foundation aid is still an unencumbered aid amount from the state. We're still free. The Board of Education can do whatever they want with it. These are more or less earmarked suggestions. Last year, the state did not even collect the plan. This year, they are planning to collect the plan. So we are required to seek community support, earn community feedback on this report. So it's not finalized by any means. We're not required to have a hearing, but we do need to solicit feedback. So that's why we're doing this in a, you know, open board meeting. So any feedback on that plan can be dedicated to my office at the phone number there. My email address is available on our website. And again, that does need to be posted on the district by July 1st. And that is all I had for you this evening.
Board members, questions or comments?
I just have one question. If the state pulls back on the, or I guess it's the, on the free lunches, families can still apply for free and reduced lunches, correct?
Yeah, 100%. That's a great clarification.
I just want to make sure families understand that.
Yep. So we would go back to, as we have typically done in the past, include a free and reduced price lunch application in our summer packets for all families. This year, even with meals being free, families were good about filling those out. Our numbers were pretty similar to where they had been even in paid years. So that's something we'll continue to do. We also want to make that available in Spanish. We're talking about making that application available digitally this year as well.
Thank you.
Lisa.
I'm still confused by this foundation aid plan thing. I, I don't understand why that's any different than the budget that we put forth, right? So if it's unencumbered funds anyway, and we put forth a detailed budget, like, what are they looking for?
It doesn't make sense. So I'm, I'm glad you pointed out the confusion. So we as a, you and the Board of Education are responsible for developing a budget throughout the spring, right? The April meeting, we had finalized state aid numbers from the state and that's when we have to finalize our budget, right? So we put forward a budget to the community. So those dollars are not earmarked. They're not dollar for dollar. Like, so it's hard to say of these $3.5 million, it's going to go specifically to teacher X or teacher Y. What we need to do is say, okay, you're getting $3.5 million from the state. How are you going to spend it? How is it within your $110 million budget? What are you spending it on? And essentially, that's all they're asking for. Because what happens is legislature, legislators have very good intentions and they give out a lot of money, the phase-in formula of the foundation aid. And they just want to ensure that there's some oversight of how it's being spent and that it's being spent appropriately so that in future years, they can look back and talk to constituents and ensure that it was a worthwhile investment. That's as best as we can gather. And as I mentioned, last year, the state didn't even collect the report. This year, at least, they're going through the, the process of collecting it. But, but again, it's not tied to anything. There's no penalties. There's no recourse. It's just something that we're required to do.
So what are we soliciting comment on, I guess? That's my other question.
Of those items, is there anything else that they think the new three and a half million dollars of foundation aid should otherwise be spent on?
So this, the plan we have will be posted by July 1st? Is that correct? And then, so that feedback can come as, as Dr. Driffl mentioned, it's not like a end date, but in terms of through June 30.
Hopefully, hopefully feedback would be in the next couple of weeks so that we could take a new account before it was posted online and potentially submitted to the state, which I think they're going to probably do sometime in July.
Okay. Thank you.
That concludes superintendent reports.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Putnam. We have nothing on facilities, which brings us to six, item 6A, financial items. It is recommended that the following year end, 2021, 22, fund balance authorizations be approved. Dr. Driffl just went through those numbers, so I'm not going to read them again. So you, it is basically the adds and, and year-end adds and reductions plus what to do with the available fund balance. Again, he, he just presented that. So may I have a motion and a second for the year end, 2021, 22, fund balance authorization as follows? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Textbook approval. It is recommended that the board approves the recommended textbooks as presented on March, May 24th. You have the list here. This was presented at the last board meetings. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Policies for second read and approval. It is recommended that the board approve the following policies as presented. And again, these were discussed at the previous meeting. The new 7630 Committee on Special Education and Committee for Preschool and Special Education, 7640 Student Individualized Education Program. And then there's the corresponding regulation, students with disabilities. And then there's the corresponding regulation, Students with Disabilities Recommended Individual Education Plan. Were there any other inputs or community comments on those?
There were not.
Okay. So may I have a motion and a second that those policies be approved as presented?
So moved, second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Okay, next up is visitor speaking time. We, as the Board, appreciate the comments of the community during the public session of the board meeting. Every individual that speaks has a vested interest in the education of our students. Your comments are important to us. Matters involving particular individuals or specifics in negotiations are not permitted during public sessions. Concerns will be referred to the district administration for follow-up action when appropriate. Visitors may stand up to speak at a meeting by emailing the district clerk, Sharon Arc Fitz, with their name, address, phone number, and the topic for which they would wish to address. Registration will be open from 8:00 a.m. on the Friday before the meeting and remain open until 3:00 p.m. on the Tuesday of the board meeting. Speakers are expected to identify themselves with their name and address before presenting and limit their comments to three minutes or less. A total of 30 minutes will be allotted for visitor speaking time. The Board will not be responding to comments during this session, but please be assured we are listening. Finally, we ask that all speakers to model the conduct we expect from our students in school daily. Please be respectful of others in your words, conduct, and demeanor. Thank you. First speaker is Dana Mar. Good evening, Ms. Mar. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Dana Mar, 1690 Cultural Road. With the recent shootings in Texas and Buffalo, it's vital that we remember to take a proactive stance to protect those in our schools and to be attentive to the emotional health of students and staff. I want to reflect back on the spring of 2017. This was a tough time for many in our district. What I am about to share may be sensitive for some, and I want to acknowledge that. With that said, it's vital we recognize the impact it had on so many so we can do different going forward. Picture yourself in a workplace, being told a coworker recently passed away. Next, you learn it was suicide. How incredibly hard would that be? Now imagine you are a teenager in school, multiply that by four. This is what many students, including my oldest daughter, experienced in a short 18-month period in this district. What I ask is that the needs of the students in our school be taken seriously and that staff are adequately equipped to navigate situations as they arise. I spoke with the Director of Training at NAMI a couple of weeks ago. They offer a number of trainings to the general public for free and can customize and set up and accommodate scheduling needs for teachers and staff. They are extremely willing to provide training and come out to the schools. I had the opportunity to attend part of an eight-hour youth mental health first aid training about five years ago. It's just one of many trainings that NAMI offers and is well worth the small investment in time to do so. NAMI shared that they came out to talk to a parent committee back in September. My hope is that these resources, along with other community resources, will be ever-present in our district rather than an occasional visit or presentation. NAMI's trainings are all provided through a trauma-informed lens to best support everybody as these are being offered. Another point I would like to raise is the importance of students feeling safe. I recently spoke with a high school student in the district who expressed that many kids avoid using a number of the restrooms, particularly the multi-stall, gender-neutral one near the chemistry room. There are concerns of students vaping and doing drugs in there and taking photos of other students while in the restrooms, which is extremely concerning with students of any gender utilizing it. It's important for every student to have a safe space, especially for something as sensitive as the restroom. This does not sound like a safe space based on this account that was shared with me. School regulations around gender-neutral bathrooms, last updated in 2021, require that all single occupancy-use bathrooms are identified as gender-neutral. Nowhere in the regulations does it require nor say that multi-stall bathrooms should be utilized as a gender-neutral bathroom. I would anticipate a number of safety concerns to be expected with this type of a model, especially among the age group of students in high school. Lastly, I want to take note of the call I received from Mr. Putnam in follow-up to my speaking on the April 26 board meeting. This was very appreciated and went a long way. I am hopeful, as you shared, that you like to follow up with speakers, that this will continue to be a consistent practice going forward for those speaking at these meetings. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carmen Leonardo. Mr. Leonardo, please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Leonardo, and I reside at 1915 Penfield Road. I represent Penfield United for Education Excellence. At the last board meeting, I made several points regarding the Board and administration's lack of transparency. I want to highlight one of those points and present you with a simple plan any one of the board members can implement. The point that I know I drew your attention to is the inability for the public to ask you questions at a publicly-held meeting and to get responses. The Board at some point must have made a unilateral decision not to respond to questions from the public. This is not a requirement in your bylaws. It is not a requirement of rules of order and is not required by the state education law. It is simply a decision the Board either made or agreed to and can therefore be changed. We understand why it makes sense not to answer questions at meetings. The meetings could go on for hours. And if someone had lots of questions and lots of follow-up, others might not have an opportunity to participate. But as a result, you, the Board, and the administration severely limit how you are held accountable for your actions and decisions. You state in your rules that concerns raised will be referred to the administration for follow-up. We want the administration to answer questions on the spot. We do not want nor need a crafted answer to a question. The administration either knows what it's doing or it doesn't. You provide no avenue for the Board to respond to questions directed by the Board and to individual members where they lead or participate in board advisory committees. The remedy for this is simple. It's to schedule duly-called public meetings in between scheduled board meetings for the express purpose of allowing the public to ask questions about information presented at previous meetings. Pursuant to board bylaws, any single board member can call a special meeting. So if any of you has an interest in becoming transparent, you will call for such meetings. Which one of you will be brave to move the Board towards, and I quote from your own duties, "to carry out the will of the people"? Which one of you will actually ensure the Board represents the public and not the administration or your individual points of view? I thank you for your attention, and I look forward to your follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Leonardo. That concludes visitor speaking time. Next up, the committee meetings. I think we really, were there any committee meetings? I don't have anything on here other than the annual meeting, which I'll get to in a moment.
Audit.
What?
Audit.
Audit, oh.
We had, yeah. DI.
Okay, audit. Who would like to speak to that?
Dan will speak to that. This is my last meeting, so I weren't thinking about it.
We, the Audit Committee had its last meeting of the year. I think it was on May 26th. We had our auditor, our external auditor, Tom Zuber from Mengele Metzger Bar, to review the audit engagement process. That's a requirement for every year so that the Audit Committee can understand exactly what goes into the audit, what the process is, what all the services are, what's the auditor's responsibility, what's management's responsibility. So that went well. The Audit Committee heard from the Board's internal claims auditor regarding the annual internal claims audit. So this is a look at all of our procurement activity over the year to ensure that we're adhering to all of our policies and procedures and complying with all the applicable federal, state, local, and board policies around how we purchase goods and services in the district. We provided a update regarding the internal audit, which this year is looking at the inventory in the bus garage as we build our new bus garage to try to develop new best practices there. And then we set new dates for the next year, and we thanked Barb for her keen eye on the Audit Committee over the years. And the community member that serves on the Audit Committee expressed an interest in continuing for another year. So another thank you to Barb for all your work on the Audit Committee. And thank you to Kristen as well for your work.
Thank you. Were there any other committee meetings? And that is just, there were more? Am I missing?
We had the, yesterday.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm doing this out of order.
Totally fine.
Let me, I apologize.
You're fine.
I had the wrong thing. Okay, Monroe County School Board Association Annual Meeting.
Wait, I have DI, I know.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. So last night was our last meeting of the school calendar year, and we reviewed and discussed our equity self-assessment results. And we broke out into small groups, and we just, as a group, looked at what we thought we needed to really prioritize. And I think what we just really kept coming back to is that we can't work in silos and that we need to continue to look at everything we do through the equity lens and from there, making sure that we're really just ensuring that for every person in Penfield, it's a welcoming and affirming environment so that we can keep staff here, so we can attract staff of color, so our kids can really see themselves in our staff. And once we do that, how that really impacts our curriculum, and that just really spirals and really just reminding ourselves that none of this work is done in a silo, which I think is a tribute to our leadership team that really, they discuss everything together, everything, it's just a team, so. And then we set dates for next year, and we already have three community meetings set for next year. So that's pretty exciting work, so they have accomplished a lot this year.
Thank you. Any comments, questions or comments on those, either of those? And again, I apologize, I had these in order. We also had the Monroe County School Board Association Annual Meeting. Barb and I attended, and one of the things they do is they recognize board members who are ending their tenure. So she gets all the recognition she wants. You know, the Monroe County School Board Association, this is the annual meeting where we basically get the final report out with the business, it's kind of a business meeting. We also re-elect officers, and there's, this is where all the school boards in Monroe County get together and work in partnership to really make a difference with mainly advocacy, both locally and at the state and even at the federal level. We have, we've been very successful. There's a couple of things that have, that are coming up this year. Our, the director, Sheri Johnson is retired. She, like Barb, has been around before as director, she was a board member. I think she was also a teacher?
Yes.
Yep, so she was also a teacher, so she's been in education her whole career. Another great asset that we have to replace. We basically found a great asset in Amy Thomas, who was the president of the Pittsford Board of Education. And now she will be taking over that role. And you will see her, you know, oftentimes when there's something in the news about education, you would see Sheri speaking on behalf of all the districts, and she knew the issues, you know, in and out. And so Amy will be the person you'll see with that. So it will be, you know, we're, I think it's a strong organization because it is really mainly run by the Boards, but, and they made a great choice with the leadership, the administrative leadership. So I just want to point that out. That's all I have there. No unfinished business, any new business? Okay, with that, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
I think I'm going to pull privilege and not allow a second. So you cannot end your tenure.
Oh, you have to stand on.
So is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned.
Adjourned.